Good afternoon, everyone. Today is November 18th, 2025. Thank you for coming and visiting our city council's study session. The last one I'll have the honor of presiding over. But it's 1:00 PM, and this is a city council's study session. We only have one item on our agenda today, but we will start with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Gambogi is excused from the meeting.
Well, I think it's very appropriate, now that we're in the middle of a rainstorm, that we have a presentation and discussion and an update on our draft long-term water management plan. Leslie Grazer.
Yes, sir. Set up here. Well, good afternoon, mayor and council and councilmen-elect who's in the audience today. For this item, we're going to have three presenters, so you won't get bored with just hearing from me today. So I'm Leslie Grazer. I'm a staff member within the community development department, and my title is Water Resource Project Manager. My supervisor, Brian Reese, will be following me also in the community development department and the Water Resource Manager. And Herb Dishlip, Mr. Herb Dishlip from Herb Dishlip Consulting, who's been working with the city for quite a long time, will also be presenting today, and they might want to expand on their introductions when they're, when they come up. Okay, so the bulk of today's presentation is going to focus on the work and the findings to date related to supply and demand analyses. First, Brian and I will take you through some of the updates related to the project framework, because we've had a few changes along the way. Let's look at our consulting team. So this is an important part of getting the work done. Mr. Dishlip has been in contract with this project since January of 2025. So obviously, he has a lot of work to present, and he's presenting today. Matrix New World on the right-hand side, their contract is being signed now. They work through a process called the on-call contract process. And then in the middle is Corolla Engineering. Their contract is being written now to the, for the scope and fee they provided to us a while back. So soon, we'll have, this project will have its complement of consultants, each focusing on different portions of the plan. And note that how it's set up visually is how this is working. We don't have a lead consultant and sub consultants. They all are working equally on this project. And so this is why we need the sunburst diagram. We're going to continue with this. So on this, you can see where Herb Dishlip is working on the, basically, supply and demand portion. I'm going to try this pointer. I was told to be patient. Oh, there we go. Supply and demand. Matrix is going to be working on our hydrogeology, and then Corolla was working on the infrastructure aspects of the report and report production overall. So why this diagram was important is that in Herb Dishlip's part of the sunburst, he's working on the supply and demand scenarios, which we know that those will be then run. I think I pointed too long. I was told be patient with this. There. Okay. Will be run in a model, looking at the hydrology. So this is really important to the city. We need to be looking at how does this, our demand currently and in the future affect the aquifer? And where you want to think about horizons that you want to not surpass, drop below. And then over on this side, yeah, see, it doesn't like being pushed too long. Okay. They told me not to give up in the control room. Okay. I trust them. Okay. And then on the, the scenarios will also be run against the infrastructure. The intent is do you see how our infrastructure is going to keep up with everything? Now, on the right side of the slide is the, the city staff and internal structure that supports this project. So you can see the list there. Moving along, we don't have much time left in 2025. So we put there are three focus areas in place. As you know, it's important to have all your consultants under contract. We'd like to, if possible, have a kickoff meeting where all three consultants are working together and understanding how we're going to build the timelines to get the work done. And then last is the obligation mapping. This has been underway for a fair amount of time. We'll dig into this more a little bit later. And at the end of the presentation, we'll look at kind of the next steps that we can vision so far. Okay, the planned timeline, this is important to know that, use my, maybe, right here, based on the city's awarded Bureau of Reclamation grant. So we've talked in subcommittee about, there's a council strategic plan from 2024 to 2029, and it has a certain due date. We're trying to set the due date in line with the grant that we acquired prior to that. So as you can see, from November 2024 through December 2024, we're working on the pre-plan work. We've been in the planning process now, January 2025, and it'll go through 2026. We're looking at a draft report in the July-August 2026 timeframe. And then to acquire our grant monies that we were awarded, we need to have a final report in, to them by December 2026. If there are any questions on these opening slides, I'd like to turn it over to Brian Reese for the next slide.
Thanks, Leslie. Hi, everybody. I'm Brian Reese. I'm the Water Resource Manager here for the city of Prescott and in the Community Development Department. And yeah, I wanted to talk to a little bit about how I see this going and the big questions. Since I've been here, I call these the big questions that I always ponder, people are always asking me. Do we have enough water? And this question always, and all these other questions always just, they just bring in my head more questions instead of answers. So I say to myself, do we have enough water for how long? Tomorrow? Yes. Five years from now? Yes. 20 years? Yeah? 50 years? Well, okay, next question. When will we run out of water? Well, how will the city grow? What will that growth look like? How efficiently will we use that growth water? How will the aquifer react to that growth? Okay, next question. What do we need to do to make sure we always have water? Okay, I got an answer. We need to plan. So great, we're starting to, we're starting to do our planning now. And with that planning, we can start to answer all of those questions through a series of first-step determinations, as outlined on this slide, which basically represents all of them. And in order to do that, your Water Resource Management Team has been getting together with various city departments and divisions, community development planning, tourism and economic development, recreation services, water and wastewater operations. We're getting together with them, and we want to make sure that we understand exactly where they feel the trends, the trajectory, and the key points for all of these first-step determinations are. So we're taking that information, we're sharing it with our consultants. They're using it to establish the analysis that they're doing and using it to establish a baseline water usage for this plan. So this baseline water usage that we're establishing is going to be able to give us a clear understanding of how these demands measure up to the, to our water supplies based on projections of growth rates that are similar to the patterns that we have now, maybe similar to growth rates, patterns that are higher than we're seeing now or lower than we're seeing, and maybe even other scenarios that will develop as we're talking to all these departments. So one of the things that I think is important, and I'd like you to pay particular attention to when it comes up in the, in the presentation, is the obligations portion that we'll be discussing. It's really important that we all understand what obligations the city has already committed to, and it's also important to understand that those obligations will lead to other demands, because those obligations, when they involve homes or houses, will lead to support services such as medical or shopping, recreational facilities that are going to have to come and be part of that, too. So that's all important for us to consider, and it's one of the main reasons why we want to get the vision on the city's growth from all of these departments that we're talking to. Okay, so a key component of this initial effort is going to be establishing strategies that help us understand how we can use our water as efficiently, as efficiently as possible, help us understand how we can control or reduce loss and unaccounted-for water within the city's infrastructure, create management strategies that make the best use of our groundwater or surface water and our effluent supplies. Throughout that process, starting today, we'll be coming to you to discuss details of our findings, details of the work that we're doing, and the strategies that we want to implement in this plan. We want to get your feedback so that we can incorporate that into this process. The end goal of this first process is going to be a plan that outlines the strategies and the goals that mark the beginning of a new water management strategy for the city's water supplies. From those goals and strategies, we can then start to look at the codes that we have in place and what we need to do with those codes in order to make sure that they support the plan and that they, and that they can help it, can enhance the plan. We can look at our water policy to make sure that the water implement, the water management implementation we're doing supports this plan. And then from there, we can look at our procedures to make sure that we have the tools in place for city staff to do their everyday duties in support of this plan. So that's where we want to go. So after we do all of that, we can take a breath, and then we can start contemplating other questions about our water supply. How does future weather patterns impact those goals and strategies in our plan? How fast can our system recover from emergencies, fire, severe storms, earthquakes even? How are we going to adapt to PFAS? What other emergent contaminants are lurking around the corner? How are we going to bring in additional water supplies? And how do we get them here? So once again, the planning process starts all over again and sets a process together that's probably in continual motion, probably far after I'm gone and probably at the end of all of our careers. So I wanted to share a little story with you. I'll make it quick. I found this, I was doing some research on old plans that the city has done. There's been quite a few of them in the city's past. And I came across this article. It was by Mick Woodcock. He did a project called Days Past, or he was part of a project called Days Past. It was a collaboration with Charlotte Hall and Prescott Correll of Western International. And the article talked about the city's efforts in 1884 to start the first waterworks to provide a consistent water source for the people of Prescott. So by 1884, the city had determined they needed a consistent water source. They just had ditches and canals that brought water in. And so they picked the Miller Creek Dam and Reservoir site. And by 1980, or 1886, they had, they had built the dam, and they had filled up the reservoir, and they were bringing consistent water into the city. Also, the reservoir was, was, was quite a recreational spot. There was reports of boating, fishing, hunting even, and the city decided to build a baff at the facility, so they even had a baff out there. So it's quite a, quite an amenity for the city. But within two years, by 1886, they were starting to have some problems. It was silting up, debris was clogging up the waterworks, and they're having problems getting consistent water into the city. And then shortly after that, the reservoir started to recede. So it was reported by 1888 that the reservoir was getting alarmingly scarce, and by 1889, it was reported that the city waterworks were dry. So the city and the city engineer got together again, went back to the drafting table, and they found a new source. So they, they found a well that they were going to drill right next, or a well location to drill right next to, or in the proximity of the Prescott Mile High Middle School. So they dug the well, they did their test, they determined that there was sufficient water, and they built a reservoir there. And then they took the waterworks from the Miller Creek site, and they brought it over to the well, set it up. On June, June 22nd, 1892, it was reported that after 17 hours of pumping, they had filled up the 50,000-gallon reservoir. Unfortunately, by June 29th, seven days later, they reported that water was once again scarce. The council decided to put a decree that all water hookups would need a water meter to control overuse, hence maybe the first conservation measure ever adopted by Prescott City Council. In September of that year, there was a fire, and there wasn't sufficient water pressure in the system to fight it, so there was severe damage. And shortly after that, they decided to start hauling water back into the city again. So in an ironic twist, in 1893, it was reported that although the city's new waterworks well was almost dry, the old Miller Creek reservoir was full again, and people were enjoying boating and bathing. So, you know, the point of the story is that back in the 1880s, those people in that council had to take the first steps to creating a water supply for the city. Now, we're taking the first steps of creating a long-term water management plan for the city. So the bottom part of this slide shows that we've been thinking about developing a long-term water management plan for a while. We started, we made progress, we went on holding patterns, we started back up again. Much like the people in the 1880s, they didn't know that this project they were starting was going to be in continual motion for 125 years. We don't know where this project's going to go, and we don't know where we'll end up, but we're starting the first steps. So with that, I'm going to bring up Herb Dishlip so we can start.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the council, mayor, my name is Herb Dishlip. I'm a civil engineer, contractor for the city for many, many years. I've had the pleasure of working on a number of planning activities for the city, including assured water supplies, designations, looking at obtaining water from the Big Chino Basin and developing the water management model. And the water management model really is a key first step to doing this plan, and it was good foresight that the city decided that before we plan, we need to know what we're doing. We need to know where we are. And as Brian talked about, the city is not new. We're not starting at the beginning. We're starting where we are. And it's really important that we know where we are, and we call, we're calling that our baseline discussion as, as we go into the plan. You know, things are dynamic in water, they always are, but they also take a lot of lead time. You don't change things overnight. You don't build things overnight. You look at opportunities you have available, you contemplate them for a long time, you make decisions. And that's really how the city has gone, at least for the top 20, 25 years I've been associated with the city. We looked at opportunities, and the city made decisions with regard to these opportunities. And I'd call that a plan, but it, it's a step-by-step plan rather than a comprehensive look at anything. And, and what this process is, and, and it's not unique to Prescott, lots and lots and lots of cities develop water management plans, is the opportunity to get a big-picture look. But the first step is to establish where we're starting at, what's our, what's our baseline? And we looked at, let me flip the slide, but this is not where I'm going to start talking, though, but, but as you, as you look at the baseline, we're trying to follow a manual that was developed by the American Water Works Association for Planning, which gives guidance for municipalities, large and small, on the elements that you should consider in putting together a water management plan. And then you kind of pick and choose what you think is appropriate for your own city, but it's a, it's a really good framework to say, there's been a lot of effort put in by this organization, the American Water Works Association, to look at how our plans work together throughout the country. And, and what we looked at, when we looked at that outline, was, yeah, there's a lot of good stuff there, but it might not just fit perfectly for what we need in Prescott. But we'll take what we need, and then we'll add to it. And the last time I was here, I talked about the uniqueness of Prescott, and, and that's the key, is that no two cities are like, you may share common problems with other cities. You may look at the legislature and say, you know, we've got the same problem Phoenix has, or the same problem that Gilbert has, but it's not the same problem. It's similar in character, but not the same. And, and what's really critical for us is to know, well, what do we, what is Prescott specific? What is it that we are, that we need to focus on? And what we'll talk about today with a lot of these slides and a lot of the work we've done today is digging into the data, to the database of what has been collected over many years, using the WORM and other databases, Department of Water Resources database, and look at some of the outcomes of defining where we're starting at, what our baseline is. And there's going to be a lot of charts and pie charts and graphs, and I want to assure you, there's a lot of data behind those pie charts and graphs. I can't, if you have a question, I'm sure I can't remember the answer to every one of them, but they came from somewhere. So, so we do have answers, but I probably won't have them off the top of my head. So I want to start with this first chart that's up there. And this directly comes from the manual approach. The manual approach says, especially in the West, you need to give a baseline consideration to your regulatory water rights environment. A lot of places in the East, they don't really have water rights like we do, they don't have a regulatory structure, they certainly don't have active management areas, things like that. So they have their own way of looking at parameters. But here, we have our set of parameters, and, and we've broken it out here to, what are the regulatory and legal framework? And it's really a critical baseline consideration, because, you know, how you operate legally constrains you or gives you opportunities, both. Especially in the state law, we've, when I was working with the state, we went out of our way to try to create things like recharge projects and, and storage facilities so that communities would have opportunities to take advantage of their water supplies. But now that those statutes are in place, then they also put constraints. You have to follow those rules, not make up your own rules. So we'll start with the federal rules. They're really kind of secondary in water management, but they're critical in water quality. Almost all of the water quality regulatory framework comes from federal laws. Some of them are administered by the state through the ADEQ, and some of them are administered by EPA. But critical are the Safe Drinking Water Act, rules with regard to disinfection, arsenic, copper rules, coliform rules, PFAS, which we're facing here as an issue in the Clean Water Act. Those are all federal water quality considerations that the city as a municipal water provider, as a utility company, is regulated by. And we know that those things change sometimes. Sometimes the rules get stricter, sometimes they get harder or easier, but for planning purposes, you can't foresee changes in regulations. So we have to look at all these acts the way they are and how they affected the city. And to a great deal of extent, we've had to put in money and infrastructure for keeping the wastewater clean. For PFAS, we've, right now, we've turned off a well, but if we turn it back on, we might have to put infrastructure to keep the water clean. So regulatory things lead to actions and decisions. So regulatory things lead to actions and decisions, and that's really important, that we understand that framework. I've got one thing up there, the federal settlement, and that has to do with the Yavapai Indian Tribe, Yavapai Prescott, where we entered into, we are a party, a signatory to the settlement agreement, Indian Water Rights Settlement, that puts the city in an obligatory position to have to provide water to the reservation. And it was a mutual agreement, they got an overall comprehensive settlement that was approved by Congress, but we entered into a separate agreement, a water service agreement. So that's kind of a federal water right perspective as it relates to Indian trustlands or Indian reservations. Moving on, though, to the state, that's where most of the regulatory action is that affects us, and most of that comes from the fact that we're in an active management area regulated by the state under the State's Groundwater Management Act of 1980. If we were not in an active management area, we'd still be regulated, but not nearly to the same extent, not to the same level of considerations. One of the fundamentals in the Groundwater Act was what gives you a right to pump groundwater to serve people? Because it was, prior to the Groundwater Act, there really weren't rights. The Groundwater Act established groundwater rights that at least were tangible, that you could see listed and recognized. Now, the service area right is our fundamental right to pump water and serve our customers. And it's an expandable right. As we grow, we can use those wells or pump additional wells to serve new customers without having to buy a retire a right or do anything. So it's a fundamental water right that was critical, that was established. And that's a basis of how we use groundwater. We've got other things listed up there, Statement of Claimants, that's SOC's Statement of Claimant, that's the state adjudication that's going on in the court system, where all of the surface water rights in the state are being reviewed and will be adjudicated by the court and established, if it's a surface water right or it affects a surface water right, how water can be used in the future. All wells have to be registered, and in particular, within an AMA, all wells over 35 gallons a minute have to be metered, and we have to file reports every year. And that's not just city, that's any water user in our AMA. And that's a critical component, because we are one customer or one pumper out of this aquifer, and we need to know not just what we're doing, but what everybody else is doing, and the state has oversight over pumping and limitations on pumping. There's one listed up there, Groundwater Transportation Authority. Generally, in the state, the state is banned transportation of groundwater between basins, but exceptions were made. And one of the exceptions has to do with the city of Prescott, without our name being on it, because can't have specific legislation, but it's for us. And it has to do with the ability to transport certain volumes of water from the Big Chino Basin, or as a result of retiring historically irrigated acres. And all that's laid out in statutory framework. And those are limitations, again, is how we look in the future. We know, say we did want to build an importation, you can't build an unlimited one, you have to follow what the state statutes allow. These are critical baseline parameters. With regard to our surface water, they have water rights, and all surface water in the state requires a water right. It sets forth parameters of when we can store water in the lakes, how much water we can divert and use, and where our pointed diversions are. And that's gone through, you know, the original rights were established by the Chino Valley Irrigation District, although we have rights to Goldwater Lakes as well, that are independent of that purchase agreement. But coming out of that framework, an agreement was signed with the Chino Valley Irrigation District, that we'd assume certain responsibilities that they had assumed, including one with SRP in agreement. And as we look for the severance transfer of those rights to municipal, significant changes were made in the volume of that right to recognize it was a municipal right now and not an agricultural right. So all those things are the kind of state law proposals that have an effect on us. I just want to mention, the last one on that blue line is the active management plans. And the state is, ADWR has developed now five management plans for the Prescott AMA. And they describe conditions within the AMA, but they also establish conservation requirements for municipalities and individual users, and they establish conservation requirements for water right holders who are not served by the cities or an irrigation district. And those plans now have reached the fifth plan. I don't think there's, right now, in the works, a sixth plan, probably there will be, but we have to assume, as we're doing our planning as a city, that it's the fifth plan we need to take into consideration what those, excuse me, requirements are, and how are we going to implement those requirements? In the green, there's certain state law water quality requirements, where we have to have permits, aquifer protection permit, DPS, the discharge elimination has to do with our effluent supply and our recharge projects. All that's regulated most directly by ADEQ. So we have kind of two state agencies that we keep in mind all the time. But that set of laws creates a baseline framework for how you can operate your system now and into the future. And then finally, the city itself has certain codes and obligations, both through the charter and policies. I want to stress, one thing that we kind of forget sometimes is that we've entered into contracts and agreements, legally binding contracts and agreements. And we know that they could be modified if both parties agree to renegotiate, but as we're going to look at this plan, we can't predict renegotiation, we're going to have to predict that every one of those contracts and agreements would be met, and that that would be obligations of the city to comply, again, a legal framework. So those are the kinds of things that establish a baseline framework, and that's the kind of work that the American Water Works Association wanted to make sure that anybody who reads the plan understands, well, you can't do some things because you're constrained by a framework you live in. We have water rights, and you can't just say, well, I need a different water right. No, you have a water right the way it is. So that kind of summarizes a big step of, there's a tremendous amount of detail involved in all these things, how it specifically affects the city. But for the most part, the city is, in my opinion, completely in compliance with all laws and regulations, and I'm not aware that we've ever been out of compliance. So all of this stuff is a fundamental action that the city wants, you don't want to be out of compliance, you get a bad newspaper article, so. And it's not like some communities aren't out of compliance, especially on water quality, it happens fairly frequently. So let me move on then, more to getting into the nuts and bolts of what we've been doing to make progress on this plan. And that's what I want to stress today, is we've been working hard, and we have made a lot of progress on this plan. And most of it is involved in looking at our databases and seeing, where are we? So this is a map, we call it the 2024 Service Area Map. We've established 2024 is our base year, and 2025 is almost over, but you really don't know what happened in 2025, or several months after the year's over, when you compile all your records. And we started doing this in 2024, and it's important that we establish that's our base year. But you can see, we serve a tremendous amount of area. We serve not just within our city limits, but we serve in Towne-Chino Valley, in the unincorporated parts of Yavapai County, and on the Yavapai Indian Reservation. We have jurisdictional situations all over, and it's not like we just started these services. We've been serving in these different jurisdictions for many, many years. And then there's, you can see, it's a little hard to see, but there's a lot of areas within the city limits, there's no service yet, and those are probably our main growth areas. Associated with this map is an operating distribution system. And up in the north part, if I can get the thing to work, there's one of our well-filled areas, and down by the airport, there's another well-filled area. And those are our primary water sources for potable water supply. We also have, not shown on this map, a non-potable distribution system, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And that water does not come from wells, it comes directly from our wastewater treatment plants. But you can see, we serve a broad area, and that involves, you know, a lot of pipes, a lot of maintenance, a lot of storage tanks to get water pressure. We have wells, we have to have redundancy in our well capacity, we have to make sure our pipelines are well-maintained, and a lot of it has to do with how the baseline infrastructure is constructed. We're basically the majority of the city's uphill from where our wells are. And so all that factors into the infrastructure portion of the service area. So when we look at these jurisdictions, we're looking at accounts, and what we've chosen to do in looking at this plan or data, we're not looking at houses or addresses, we're looking at using our municipal billing system as our baseline. We know we have certain accounts, we keep records of whether they're residential or non-residential accounts, and we have different meters for different accounts. But what we've decided is that we can track accounts and water use directly because of billing. And we find that that's the most useful way to analyze our information, is by account. And so when we look at this chart, you can see the total of the accounts is 25,573 accounts in 2024. That's a significant number, that's to keep track of. What we know is that some counts go dormant in given years, when houses are vacant, somehow new accounts come in every year, and we establish those. And you look at this by jurisdiction, the vast majority of the accounts, and therefore the vast majority of the water volume, is within the city limits. You know, 5,700 out of 6,600 acre-feet of water under volume delivered. When you look at the jurisdiction, the pie chart, 87% of the potable accounts are within the city of Prescott, but we also have, you know, 13% that aren't, and that's a significant number also. Let's go over to the last two columns, because I think that's, what we talk about a lot is what's average use per account. And we tend to talk a lot about single-family, and I'll talk about that, but this is total accounts. And you can see, within the city limits, our average total account number is about .26 acre-feet per acre, or per account, .26. But the median, which is the midpoint of the accounts, when you take, so many of the accounts are very low water-using residential, and then you consider the high-water-using non-residential, the midpoint is way less than the average. And so when we're looking at, we like to look at both factors, the median account number, which is what's the midpoint, which is kind of what you'd expect for something that's a typical non-residential or residential. You can see that it's only about half of what the average is. And it holds true for the overall city service area of .26 and .138. This is just a demand chart for single-family, where plotted out for 2024, how much water was used by every single-family account in the city, or in the city service area. And the pie chart on the left is an important one. It shows what the cousin of the pie chart on the left is, how many accounts there are. And actually, about 89%, as I showed you before, 89% of the accounts are single-family accounts, and only about 8% are non-residential. But when you look at volume, and this is why that median is different to the average, when you look at the volume, 34% of the volume is non-residential water. And so non-residential, you don't look at non-residential as a sector based on the number of accounts, because that's very misleading. You look at the non-residential sector based on, this 34% of the water deliveries are non-residential deliveries. On the right side, though, I just plotted out to give you an idea of this difference between average and median, and you can see, this was how much water was used by all of the 22,000 single-family accounts in 2024. And there's a vast, vast majority of the accounts use very small amounts of water, .12, .13. But then you get to the far right, the graph skews, because there are some single-family users who use considerably above the average. And this was just a graphic to show a little bit about why the average and the median are different. The average in this account number is .163, but the median is .13 something, I got the number here, .133. So .163 is 53,000 gallons per account, the median is 43,000 gallons per account. So always, when we're looking at planning, you know, we have to look at, well, there's going to be some outliers who come in, and you can't always count on everybody being average or median, that there's going to be outliers in every situation. But that's something the city can take and address, which is, you know, that in developing additions, we want to keep the water use levels lower, or more towards the average, to keep some of those right-side ones from going too high, so. So the next we'll look at is multifamily, multifamily potable. Now, multifamily is not a big sector, but it's a little misleading, because the way the city looks at multifamily is not by the kind of building that these units are in, it's by whether or not they have individual water meters or water accounts. So if you're an apartment house that has 100 units, but every single one of them has its own meter, so we keep a track, those are all considered single-family in our accounting. If they share a meter, even two or more meters, then we consider them multifamily. And there's quite a bit of logic to doing the water that way, as opposed to maybe how you zone it, or other factors, because if you can keep track of an individual unit and how much water they're using, it tracks, it tracks well with that unit. But when meters are shared, five or six, and you get transition of different people in there, it's a little harder to track what's going on within that meter account, and why is it changing over time? So that's how we define, and so you can see that, what's interesting here, there's 804 multifamily accounts, and they account for 7,600 units. So if they were all single-family, we wouldn't have 800 accounts, we'd have 7,600 more accounts. And in the past, it's not been a huge sector, but as we look forward in time, there are aspects throughout the state of Arizona, at least, where more and more multifamily units are being constructed, for affordability, for an aging population, for a variety of reasons. So when we look here at the numbers, they do differ from the numbers for single-family per unit. So the average per unit is .092, whereas I said before, the average for a single-family house was .66. So what that reflects is, one, a smaller So what that reflects is one smaller footprint probably in terms of square footage per unit, but probably also in my opinion, we're looking at is a hidden water use for outdoor water use that's not covered by the multifamily account. The outdoor water use is often covered by a commercial account and irrigation account. And so it's a little hard to compare apples and apples here. Where here we have almost entirely interior use without an outdoor component. Now that's not true universally. There's duplexes and triplexes that have yards. But for larger units, what I've seen is that there's a homeowners association that covers anything exterior and they don't do it in the same account. And so there's water used in the non-residential component that's actually used for residential purposes. But it's interesting to see that 0.092 per unit average for the system wide is considerably lower than the 0.16 number we always throw around, 0.17 per single family house. So when we're looking at numbers for people coming in for adding multifamily, we would take a look at, well, it's probably a discount number or a lower number on planning purposes when you look at multifamily. So our next one we want to talk about, and this one I don't want to spend too much time on, but it's an important one. This is kind of our work in progress of looking at non-residential in much more detail than has ever been looked at before. And what we've done is we've taken all of our non-residential customers in 2024 and tried to identify not just whether they were commercial, but what kind of commercial. And we've created categories. They're not set in stone yet, but we've established these subcategories to get a feel for what makes up a community really. It's not homogeneous commercial. There's retail, there's office buildings, there's government buildings, there's parks and recreation, there's grocery stores, there's so much to making up the non-residential component. And what we're looking at this in more detail for is to see how this translates to projections for the future. What we want is, or what our expectation is and why we do a baseline, is that we would look at without more knowledge about specific plans for commercial and non-residential for hospitals and things like that, how do you project what the future city would look like beyond rooftops? And what we know is that if 34% of the water uses in this category, again, it's not uniform, 34%, it's not an average number. It's what kind of uses we would expect to have. And so we went through the effort and this is both in a table and a geographic information database where we've identified all of our non-residential customers and put one of these labels on them to see how they're distributed, both geographically and volume-wise and how they relate to corridors of commercial use and things like that. So we've gone to a lot of effort that I think is really worth the effort to try to identify a lot more about our non-residential water use space. Some of the uses on here are carryovers from the way we've always done billing, which is irrigation uses, turf uses. So we've done that a lot.
Councilman Moore had a question, Herb.
Certainly.
The numbers kind of fascinate me as I look at them like retail. I wouldn't expect retail uses to have such a high volume of usage. I own a retail store and we have like bathrooms and we don't use a lot of water. But I'm just curious, how are you going to use this information? I realize it's going to help create a baseline, but I find it pretty interesting to see the very, the change in use or.
Just about, about one acre foot per account.
Yeah.
Yeah. And some of the retail, I think, as we dig deeper, will be more than one business where a business, a building owner has the account and they provide water to two or three businesses.
A shopping center.
A shopping center, we put into mixed use generally here because they tend to maybe have a restaurant and an office building or something like that. But I think you're right. It's worth looking at certain of these sectors and looking at who they are and how their water use, since we have the records, we have the records of each account. How do they vary over time and which, what's the range of use too within that category? And maybe we need to regroup things a little bit too, so.
Well, I think there's been a big push by the city to decrease the average gallons per household per day over the many years. And it'd be interesting to try to take that same metrics and then apply it to maybe these kinds of uses and say, okay, can we reduce the average gallons per day in retail or in mixed use and try to focus on those for water conservation as well, just like we have successfully over the years. We've seen that drop a lot in households over the last 20 years.
And it could be, we find we are very conservative. You know, when we, when we dig into this, it would be nice if we could compare retail in Prescott with retail in Gilbert, something like that and see, well, what's their average? Are we comparable? So that's part of what you do when you dig into the numbers a little bit.
Herb, Councilwoman Furrworth has a question.
Sure.
Thank you. You answered part of my question, which is the acre feet volume is total across all the accounts there. So yeah, I was looking as well in terms of, you know, in our plan, potentially over time by industry grouping, we would have some documentation of best practices and then start sharing. And I love your idea of sharing even with other communities, but yeah, I think business best practices would be a really good way to go about saving some more water.
I wasn't talking about sharing, I was talking about taking their data and looking at.
No, but I'm going from your data analysis into a plan element down the road. We've done a really good job of helping all of our residents understand how to use best practices to reduce their water use. And I think we haven't really tapped this whole area of business. And if we want to grow our economy, which we do, this is going to be fertile ground for us to do that. So really exciting. Thank you.
And I think what, when we were talking to economic development folks last week, we said, we're probably lagging in this sector. We're not caught up. It was recommended we look back a few years to see a more reasonable baseline number for comparison, that, that single family and multifamily have disproportionately outgrown the commercial sector and there's a need to do a catch-up. And so we'll have to take those kinds of things into account too. But these are the numbers we have available to us. So I want to build on the non-residential because the non-potable is all non-residential use. And these are our largest users in the city by far, by far, the, these three golf courses and the sand and gravel operation. Had they been in the potable system, the numbers would have been closer to 50/50, not 30/40, because these large, large uses are all non-residential and they're permanent uses. And this kind of shows, there's some variation. These are the same customers through the whole tenure period. And it appears probably dry years, 2021, they used our peak number, 1,800. Last year they used 1,572. What we have here though, is a situation where each one of those contractors has a contract that allows them a cap, a ceiling. 1,572 is not the ceiling and it's not any one individual's ceiling. So for some reason, all of our four customers hit the ceiling in the same year, our number would be much higher than this number.
Councilman Moore had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think information like this is an important tool for future councils. When we look at policies for how non-potable water is used, being used, we see a lot of communities in the Southwest like St. George and that area where golf courses are just being proliferated at an alarming rate and they're heavy water users. And you could think, well, at some point, maybe, I don't want to say you ban additional golf courses, but you restrict the additional number of golf courses because you take that number, 1,572 acre feet of water, what if you put that back into recharge instead of spraying it on a golf course and now you've got more water hopefully recharging back into the aquifer that you can reuse? So long-term, these are things that future councils in communities really need to look at. Are we using our money or water wisely? Because personally, I'm not a golfer and I hope I don't offend anybody, but I don't think that's a great use of water or resources personally.
Well, Councilman Moore, you can look at the Palm Springs area and the Coachella Valley. Over the last decade or more, they've pulled out massive amounts of turf and made the turf area a small kind of target areas, a lot of waste areas, and they've cut down their water use dramatically. So that's something that could be looked at.
Yeah. And as we look at it, this is our base. We have these golf courses. It's not a decision now, do we have golf courses or don't? We have these golf courses and we serve them through non-potable water.
A lot of water that goes back.
It is a lot of water, yeah. So the next slide is kind of an interesting slide that no system is 100% efficient. You always have leaks and losses and water main breaks and leaky tanks and things like that. So here's our system-wide lost and unaccounted for water and you calculate it based on how much water did you pump out of the wellfields and how much water did you deliver to customers? And the difference between the two is your lost water and it's 8.9% last year in 2024. Average is about 8%. We've had other years when it's down below 7%. So some of it I'm sure has to do with our record-keeping, you know, we, did we really capture all of our deliveries? Some of them probably sneak through with not the best metering or broken meters or things like that, but on average, now the regulatory standard is 10%. And 10% we meet, but 8.9% is a goal, something that could be reduced and many communities are below that. And so that's part of, I think, what, when we talked about the consultants, Corolla, they're, have expertise in things that have to do with infrastructure, how to save water, looking at the infrastructure system. And what you have is as you grow, you put new pipes in the ground and they don't leak as much, but the old ones get older. And so it's how do you do the comparison and the maintenance and the water tank control? We have to have water pressure everywhere in the city for fire, that means putting it into a tank, that's one more place that water could be lost. And so all that put together kind of comes to the lost and unaccounted for water. So now I want to move on to the supply, because that's kind of covered, it touched, I didn't want to say it covered, there's a lot more data we have. It touched on some of the results we found on demand. But the supply system in Prescott is unique to Prescott and it's the result of a long-range planning effort and decision-making and processes and investments. And this graph just kind of shows three kinds of water. We talk about groundwater, reclaimed water and surface water. And we tend to do these things because there's a legal definition for each one of these. What you can really think of water is one water. It's all one kind of water and it's delivered to your customers. But there's a legal framework that we look at and groundwater is defined in the statute. Reclaimed water is defined as effluent and we call it effluent mostly. In this plan, we've decided to use the term reclaimed water because we think it fits better for this community where the water is treated to a point where it's usable. It's not, for whatever purpose it's usable, it's usable for golf courses, which is one standard. It's not treatable right now for drinking water, but it's treatable enough for recharge and recovery. And then we have our surface water, which is regulated legally too. And it's really, there are important distinctions, especially when you look at that framework we talked about, the active management areas. The active management areas have goals that deal with groundwater pumping and safe yield, which is a balance between the amount of groundwater pumped and the natural and artificial recharge in the basin. So they are focused, the state law is focused on what of what we use is considered legally groundwater. Now, here we have a setting of the Prescott AMA and it's, what we wanted to focus here on is we have neighbors. We don't control the aquifer. We don't own the aquifer. We take use of the aquifer, but so do others. And how those others operate has an effect on our water supply, just as how we operate has an effect on their water supply. And so it's a kind of an important aspect that we looked at in this baseline of what is our position with regard to the others in the AMA. So we have another factor here, which is the water quality constraint, which is this basin has been designated as a sole source aquifer, which controls to what degree you can make discharges to the aquifer. They have to be recognizing that this basin is designated as a drinking water basin, which doesn't mean you can drink all the water, but you prevent pollution from degrading the water quality so it can't be used for drinking water. We have multiple water providers. We show some of them here. We also have some small private water companies. We have private wells who are on grandfather rights. We have private wells who are on permits. And then we have a whole lot of wells who are exempt, exempt wells in the AMA. And those are wells that pump less than 35 gallons a minute. Some of the analysis we did, we took a look that the Department of Water Resources collects all the data. So none of this is Prescott data. This is all from the DWR database. And we looked at pumping across the basin in 2024. And we separated it, you know, we are a municipal provider, so are others like Prescott Valley and Chino Valley, but we separated ourselves out for the purpose of looking at this chart. Now, the first chart just focuses in on what is legally groundwater. So we pump water from these wells in these two wellfields. It all looks like groundwater or water, but because of the legal system that's been created, it recognizes the investments and the effort we made to reutilize our effluent supply, our reclaimed water supply and our surface water. So when you look at our share of all pumping in the Prescott AMA in 2024, about 26%, 27% of the water groundwater pumped was by the city of Prescott and that means about 75% was not pumped by the city of Prescott. Now, there's a significant number in there for exempt wells. And by their own definition, they're not metered, so you don't know what exempt well is used. But DWR makes an estimate. They make an estimate of water use by exempt wells and it's, of my experience, it was much more important in the Prescott AMA than it was in any of the other AMAs because it was such a significant component of groundwater withdrawals. So they do that estimate and it came out that about 18% of the groundwater pumped in 2024 was done by exempt wells. And then I prepared this second chart looking at, well, what about overall water use, not just groundwater? We provide water to customers and when you compare our use as the water provider to others, we provide almost 38% of the water in the AMA. We are the large municipal water provider in this AMA. And a lot of the water we provide are not, is not groundwater, which is good, which meets our goals. But overall, when you consider how we serve water to golf courses, how we serve water to customers outside our city limits, to the tribe, we are the major, large municipal water provider in the AMA and it reflects in the, in the numbers, 38% of the water. water provider in the AMA and it reflects in the, in the numbers, 38% of the water, all the water delivered, including to farms, to domestic wells, everybody. So this chart is an important one, I think, because we talked about the different categories of water. And when you lump them all together and pump them out of the wellfields, these are our potable water withdrawals for the 10-year period. And you can see there's an upward trend, but it's also a flat trend fairly in the last five years. It's not a, you know, if you graph the graph on there, it would be upward leaning, but the city's grown quite a bit in 10 years too. We had a peak year in 2020, which 2020 was just hard to believe, it was 2020. And, but you can see we're, we don't use a lot of water. I want to point out that this graph is a little misleading because it cuts off the bottom part of the chart. Because if you didn't have the, if you had the bottom part chart, you'd almost see no differentiation because it's only a couple hundred acre feet differences at the top. But you get the trend value here and 7,200 acre feet and almost 7,300 acre feet in 2024. And we said about 9% of that is not delivered to customers. So we delivered 91% of that amount. Let's break it down here again like we did for the AMA, what was legally groundwater for the 10-year period? And you can see in the last three years, we used 1,600, 1,600 and 4,900. And that's not because we pumped more water, because the chart showed we didn't pump that much more water, which is just what labels get put on the water supply. And when you don't have good surface water runoff years, you have to make it up with some other source. And that's what I call conjunctive management. You manage your different water resources together so that you don't have a big shortfall. And what we do in Prescott is when we don't have enough surface water, we pump more groundwater. When we do have surface water, we use it first. We always use our surface water, one, it's required by law, but it's also a choice. We use the water when we have it available first. And so we automatically balance our surface water and our groundwater. But you can see that fluctuates a lot and it's a direct result of, and that's why maybe when you look at groundwater trends, you look a little bit more at averaging groundwater use than any individual one year. Here, we're looking at our reclaimed water supply and what's critical here, as we were looking at the data, is how much effluent or reclaimed water can we expect to be returned? And what we're looking at is effluent is a direct relationship to water use where people flush the toilet and take a shower. So it's, there's a direct relation to potable water delivery, to how much you can expect. And what that ratio is, is very revealing to us in terms of how is this usable as a reliable water supply? So we talked about with the previous graph is that while the groundwater may go up and down, the total water supply is pretty flat. So you can count on the potable demand number being a reasonable number to generate wastewater flow. And when you look at those return flow rates, year after year, they average out about 68%. So, and that's a revealingly high number because anybody in town of Chino Valley doesn't hook to our sewer. Anybody, there's a large number of people in the county who are not hooked to our sewer. And so we have a fairly good return flow rate. And even within the city, some of our customers are on septic tanks.
Councilman Moore had a question.
Sure.
Yeah, Herb, how do you, how do you describe what happened in 2023, why we had such a big jump and then it dropped right back down? Because that seems really unusual.
It almost, when we talked to the water utility people, they raised this as an issue. And what happened was we had a huge amount of stormwater infiltration into the sewer system and it almost overwhelmed the wastewater treatment plants to where they weren't going to function the way they're designed to function. So they identified it as a water source, but it's one that they want to eliminate.
That's like when we had the flooding in Granite Creek Park and when we had the too much stormwater discharge and it got into the sewer system.
If the water makes it to the lake, great. If it goes into the sewer system, not great. And so the numbers are a little skewed by 2023, but it really happened and it's important to recognize that it really happens because it's a problem. It's a problem. So then when we look at, how do we use this reclaimed water? I already talked about direct deliveries that we skim that off and deliver that water directly to the golf courses. We're left over with extra reclaimed water. And what do we do with that reclaimed water? Well, we recharge it all. We don't discharge any of it to this river or dump it or anything. We recharge everything that we don't deliver directly. And then we have a decision to make. How do you want to account for it? And what the city has historically done is take a balanced approach where some of the water that is recharged is counted in the year it's recharged. We call that annual storage and recovery. And that's the black lines here. And so that directly offsets your groundwater pumping in that given year. The hashed lines are water that is not recovered in the same year. And that water either goes to permanent recharge, like Prop 400 requires, or it goes to earning long-term storage credits, which is a bank account for the future. And how you balance that out, it looks like most years it's a 45, 50, something like that. I think part of the strategy is the water we pump in the airport wells, which is where the recharge is, is we count that as annual storage and recovery to some degree, just because we want to recognize that the water supply came from the recharge of effluent. But it's clearly a policy call. You could call none of it annual storage and recovery probably and take credit for all of it, or you could do the vice versa and put all of it against annual storage and recovery and carry over nothing except for what you have to do for Prop 400. But this is our baseline. This is what we've been doing. And in the absence of any change in policy, this is what we would assume we would continue to be doing, as some kind of balanced approach. And what I mentioned was, you know, it's, why do you put water into long-term storage credits? Because surface water is fickle and you need a backup supply for surface water. And recovery of your long-term storage effluent provides a very useful backup supply. And then we'll finally talk about our third leg of the stool, which is surface water that we obtained from Granite Creek and Willow Creek reservoirs. And it's important here that these reservoirs are multipurpose. We serve, we provide tremendous recreation benefits at those lakes by having water surface available and fishing and things like that. But the top portion of the reservoir, when it's got water in it, we siphon off during the recharge period to recharge. And you can see that the amount we've stored over years has been as high as 4,000 acre feet and as low as 900 acre feet. And it's not directly related to precipitation. And it'd be interesting to do some studies of, well, what is it directly related to? But I'm guessing that it's related to having rainfall like we're having today, where you get big slugs of water that don't infiltrate as precipitation and they run off and make it to the reservoir. And so you may have all of your precipitation in three or four days and it's a good thing for your surface water supply, but you spread that same number of inches over months, you may not get hardly any runoff. But I, I'm just surmising that. I, that's based on experience and not on knowledge, so.
So that's comparing absorption to runoff.
I think that's probably what's happening, yeah. The rainfall, the rainfall measured at the airport is shown in that red line. And there's some correlation to when you have high precipitation, you end up with a good amount. Also, there's lag, which you had one year, the reservoir was below the operational pool and had to fill up first to get to the level of the recreation pool and then it's available for storage. That's what I'm saying, it'd be interesting to dig into this a little bit and look at, is there a cause and effect? So that kind of covers my portion of the discussion. I wanted to make it clear that we're not done with any of this, there's more to learn, but we've learned a lot. We've learned a lot about where we are as a water provider and as a community and as a framework. And we haven't quite reached the endpoint, but we're really pretty close, so.
I know one thing hadn't been mentioned during 2020 is a lot of people were forced to stay home. Businesses were closed, so they were using a lot of home potable water, where normally they might be at a, at a remote work location where they wouldn't be using any Prescott water, but they might be down in the valley or somewhere else. But they were staying home and they were utilizing home potable water and effluent.
I'm sure that's true. I'm sure that's, that's what the water people think too.
Thank you, Herb.
Turn it back to Leslie.
Thank you, Herb. It might not seem like it's a lot of work, but he has put in a tremendous amount of work putting our pieces together so we can start moving forward into scenarios. So I'll take you through the last few slides, there's not too many left, but I think they need a little bit of background before we get started. This is really going to help dictate your scenarios and, and what you know about your water supply and your demands. But the background is that, you know, water has been placed into contracts or similar, differently over the years. In 2015, we took a real hard look at and tried to gather everything we could come up with of what was out there. And we had a list that was about 650 different contract type of documents. So they began in 1944. In the 40s and 50s, we could find things where the city had obligated themselves to water through conveyance documents, water lines service agreements and bills of sale. In the 60s, 1960s through the 1990s, there was a great assortment of documents. There were water service agreements, there were development agreements, water, will serve letters, where we couldn't find an obligation anywhere else, but it was in a will serve letter, easements, council minutes, we found some kind of stray water obligations, intergovernmental agreements started to come into play and a settlement. We talked about that earlier, the Alapi Prescott Indian Tribe. From 1999 to 2000, the city worked to put everything in contract that was related to their decision order. So you had a pot of water that you had available and you wanted to track how that water was being used and when you were fully obligated. Now you're using your current practices and your water policy. So on the chart, this pie chart here, I wanted to start there because this is what we know as of 2024. So we keep talking about this baseline and it's going to help us move into projections. The next piece, what contracts has the city entered into to serve, to serve beyond what is shown in 2024 baseline? We're going to look at that next, in the next slides, couple of slides. But what we're trying to get at is there'll be decisions to be made by the council, the leadership, community. What additional demands can be anticipated beyond what is identified in current contracts? So what we're seeing is, you know, are there private water companies within our area that are going to ask us, you know, would you please connect us and start taking care of our customers? Connecting neighborhoods on private wells, you've had that question come in over the years as well. And the last is annexing additional lands that you might decide to serve. Moving along, so how, what approach could we take? So we looked at City of Tucson and I'll just walk through how they looked at their water obligations. And I know the legend is fairly hard to see at the very top here, but the dark blue is their current, current customers. So you can see they knew where everybody was at. They knew what they were obligated to. So they have that light blue color and they're like, we know that we're expecting these folks, we're obligated to them. Whatever their agreements that they might be using that are different than ours, but same idea. And then they started looking at their expansion areas and I know you've had conversations through other means about that. So they have a dark pink where would require annexation and then they have lighter pink. I almost lost that one myself, so that's hanging out over here, this lighter pink, where they may not have to be annexed, but they might get water. And then they also kind of built themselves, how far would we really go? These are areas that we wouldn't expand into tribal lands, into forest service lands, into other water companies areas such as Oro Valley. So we're looking at taking the same approach and we just wanted to give you a quick visual of what this looks like as we know so far, being that this is in progress. This information comes from the Water Resource Management Model, but it was time to step up the model and really connect all the documents to this database for us now and for those in the future, so we know exactly why. So on the right hand, excuse me, let's start left, on the left-hand side, this is the city's water service area within or near city limits. And I know it's small, so we'll just make reference. So the airport is up here in the circle. Watson and Willow Lake are about there. The tribe is this area there and then you're sitting about here in this diagram. And then on the right-hand panel is our service area that extends into the town of Chino Valley. And just for reference, green dots here are Chino Meadows, Unit 1. This is Mesa View, I believe it's called. This is Molly Ray. And then this is basically the corridor running right through the middle. So, green and blue. So green, you're already serving, blue is what you've obligated yourself to already. So this is still a work in progress, but you can see how your obligations beyond 2024 for residential and non-residential water users might be in play. And that would take us back, you know, a couple of slides, is that these questions are probably important to start thinking about. Okay, we're going to move to our last slide for the day. We wanted to give you kind of our, where we're going from here. I'd like to start actually with the scenario development, so we're a little out of order, I guess, but this is where we need to get fairly quickly so that we can start running that information in the groundwater flow models and in the infrastructure models and see what kind of information that gives back. But we do need to select scenarios that we will run. The next piece over here is the infrastructure analysis. We're looking forward to starting the work with Corolla Engineering. They bring, once again, all three consultants. I, I don't think you could ask for anything better. They're a great team that you have working on this. So you can probably read the list yourself of what we'll be looking for there. This next block is the aquifer analysis, so this will be matrix. And then it'll culminate into a report. The outreach piece, you've probably been seeing, I know our Subcommittee for Water Issues has been seeing the outreach that has been put in place. So we have three different handouts right now, we're going to continue that. So the first one was the project overview and then we did baseline demands in 2024, 24 baseline for supplies and more will be coming out. I think Brian already touched on just how fortunate we are. Not only is our, the city's GIS department is just critical in this, it helps make things tie together so well and keeps a very good record that we can go back and reproduce exactly what we said on paper or put somewhere. But in our conversations with the planning department and the others that Brian mentioned, you have just a, it gives us so much more information to make this a great resulting project. So I think that is the end of the presentation for today. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Councilwoman Ferth.
Thank you. Just amazing and great work, you all. I'm so excited about this and how this is developing. One of the things that I do think is important in your scenario development is to ensure that you have council leadership. I think we're going to be having to make some I think we're going to be having to make some tough choices down the road. So our, the work that we're going to be doing to renew our strategic plan, you know, the work that's underway right now with the Economic Development Plan, I think it's going to come down to leaders having to make choices and you all framing it up for us. So I don't know, with your original timetable that you were sharing, when do you think you'll get to the various scenario options that we can start thinking about having more dialogue as a new council?
Boy, we would really hope in early 2026. So going back to the slides where what we were trying to cram into the last bit of this year is we have to get everybody in contract, we have to have a kickoff meeting, and then the obligations will kind of keep working on their own. But that's the best timeframe I can say at this point is probably early, you know, February 2026, we'll probably be looking. But I will rely on the city manager to let us know.
I was just about to look at Dallin and say, the timetable for us to work on renewing our strategic plan is January, if I recall?
Yeah, we have a retreat in January 20th, 21st, right in there. That can be the start of the conversation. It doesn't have to be the end.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to make a comment that I think it's really, really important, that as we continue these conversations about our water supply, that we really include our Parks and Recreation Department and the management of Willow and Watson Lake, because the capacity of those lakes, of course, has diminished significantly over time with siltation and filling in. And that's really a lost opportunity for the city as far as our ability to store more water, because the lakes don't have that capacity anymore that they used to have. And I know we talk a lot about Watson and Willow Lake, but we never talk about Goldwater Lake, which we also own. And I realize any water released from Goldwater Lake ends up in Granite Creek, which ends up in Watson Lake. But, and I know that we're managing that as a total unit, but we don't often talk about Goldwater Lake, which we own. And that's an important piece of the water ultimately that we can store and manage as we release water from upper and lower Goldwater Lakes and get it out to Watson Lake. So I just, I know I won't be on the council, but our lakes are really, really important for this picture that we're talking about today.
If I may respond to that comment? I think you'll be pleased. Within the Corolla contract, we are looking at how we can handle that water piece on the surface water side. And so they'll be watching, you know, that interconnect, as you saw or mentioned, of Goldwater and Watson and Willow and capacities and things like that. I believe Herb also has a portion in his contract to do some more work on it. We did a city do a pretty rigorous look already when we were entering information to go after our decision and order. But I'm glad you brought that up, because you do have a team that's working within the city with consultants on improving Willow Lake and looking at capacities. You also have it within the Corolla contract for this project, that they're going to be looking at that closely.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Leslie, I noticed on one of the charts back there, the large amount of consumption for agriculture. Do we have any particular overlays or any other consideration for, you know, hypothetically speaking, if a large farm were to come in and want to, you know, use a large amount of water for agriculture? Do we have anything, any other set of rules, or is it just, I mean, how would that be treated? Are there limits already? Because we had, it was in your other graph, if you go back a little bit further, where it was, I think it was 344.
Right there.
Yeah, right here. So irrigation, 354, so 284 acre feet.
That water is not associated with agriculture. That water is pretty much landscaping water inside the city limits.
Okay.
And you certainly do have control over whether or not you want to issue more accounts like that.
So right now, it's just open-ended. We just don't have any applied policies.
I don't know if there's a policy. I don't think so.
Okay. You know, I've heard, and I have never gone out there and investigated this, but I understand we have a marijuana-growing farm somewhere located in North Prescott. Do you know if that's true? And I was wondering, do we have that? I've heard it for years.
That's out of my know.
Okay.
Not in my realm. I think there's been, they grow Chino Valley quite a while ago. I haven't researched that lately, but I think there are large container farms that have been around for quite a while. And then, you know, that other aspect, I think, has been brought up, but.
Well, based on your opinion and your, you know, vast knowledge in this area, not in pot growing, in water.
Thank you.
But do you, would you, would you recommend any further, you know, policies as it pertains to large, you know, potential large agricultural companies coming into our area? Because I know that they've happened in other parts of our state.
I think the concern is mostly in the Big Chino sub-basin. So we're looking at, there will be portions of this study that start doing baseline discussions about Big Chino, but within your city limits, I don't think you have any need to necessarily worry about, worry about large agriculture. You'll have your Parks and Rec Department wanting to fill in nice congregating spaces for people in the future, I think. Into Chino Valley, there are some limitations in the contracts we have, either through the Chino Valley Irrigation District Agreement to serve municipal industrial supplies and your commercial corridor. So I don't see it in any, you know, in your service area right now. A big concern about agriculture, you might want to have some new rules about turf irrigation, potentially, golf courses, more golf courses, whatever supply they might be on, or your recreational areas.
Now, that's a great idea. Thank you, Leslie.
Councilman Moore, you had another comment.
Yeah, just to piggyback onto Mayor Protam Conney's comment, we really do control the irrigation, because when businesses come and for a water service agreement, that they have it broken out, how much is going to be used for the structure and how much is going to be used for irrigation. And so that's where we review it, and that's where we approve it. So we do have control over that.
Councilman Grady.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So how does this work, this planning initiative tie into conversations we've had about regional water management? And I'm particularly interested in, is the town of Chino Valley or is town of Prescott Valley doing similar assessments and scenarios?
Well, it's a good thing you asked, because we had this coin toss, and this is a question that Brian won. Thank you, Brian.
Okay. So we've had communication with Chino Valley, with even with Prescott Valley on cooperative efforts on regional planning. You know, I noted that the, recently, Yavapai County's created a new Water Resources Open Space Committee. So it looks like there's some county efforts that are going to come into play to try to, to try to look at overall county water use and water management. So I'm sure that the city will have a, will have a representative for that. So that'll be an interesting way to start those collaborative efforts. In some of our conversations that we've had, especially like in, kind of started off with our Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, not all of those members are in our AMA, but a lot of, but some of them are. And we've had conversations with them through those meetings about doing things like an AMA-wide or a watershed-wide water study, so that we can kind of understand the water from a watershed perspective better. So those things, we haven't acted upon those at this point in time, but they've been up into discussion. We've talked about maybe facilitating some type of AMA-wide conservation strategies and goals, so things that all of our community could be sharing in and trying to, trying to do together, so that it's working for the whole AMA. Another one that may come up in the future, legislative level, AMA-level legislative actions, you know, trying to find through the group a legislative action that can help our AMA as a whole. So I think all of those things are up, are on the table. I think that when we're talking about our long-term water management plan, it's the ability to work within our community, within, know our council's objectives, our community's objectives, get all the information that our, that our city services can provide to us, and create a plan base that's unique for us. And then with that information, we are ready now to talk to all our other partners about water use on a regional level, because we know exactly where we are, where we're going, what we want to achieve. So I encourage all of the other municipalities to do the same, and then let's get together and talk when we all have good information.
I think I also wanted to add that I'm so encouraged that the Mountain Club has been able to establish a domestic water improvement district. We identified a vast amount of water that was wasted and leaking in that area. And now that they've been able to create this district, to be able to tighten up, improve, and control their water usage, that should have a big impact on our city delivery of potable water in that area. Also, responding to your comments, Councilman Moore, you know, we have a continued number of dry wells in the county, especially on the east and the west side of the aquifer. And I know that there are more and more bulk water deliveries being made by utilizing our bulk water distribution facility on Sixth Street. Just as an illustration, there's a small water district on the west side of Williamson Valley. Most municipal water companies can deliver 4,000 gallons of domestic potable water to a resident, a residential parcel for about, generally around $40. This water district was charging like $55, because it was small and didn't have a scale to have lower infrastructure costs. But as they started to go, some of their wells started to go dry, and they had to start bringing in more storage, it went up to $66 for 4,000 gallons. Well, now all their water, their wells went dry. They had to build and install some very large storage tanks, and now it's up to $122 for 4,000 gallons. So that's just one example of what we can anticipate, having more of those unincorporated areas that have wells that are going dry and demand more delivery, and they're going to be using our bulk water storage. So I would recommend that we start analyzing and measuring how much bulk water is delivered out of our area there and see if we're starting to see an increasing trend of providing more water that ends up outside city limits, which is in contradiction to our water policy. And then lastly, I would say that having Herb's usage of the Water Resource Management Model be more utilized rather than always looking retrospectively at water that has been delivered for new accounts. If we have a company that comes in or a business that says, I anticipate using X number of acre feet per year on my water service agreement, and they get that approved, then we should be looking back at that within a couple of years to see if that's really true. Because I know there's some car washes that claim they were going to be recycling water, so their water usage would be low, and they applied for that low number. But then they found out it's going to be too expensive to utilize recycling equipment. So they decided, we'll just pay the, pay the higher bill. It's cheaper that way. But it ends up using a lot more water. So I think looking at a policy that applies to that, I think we could use the warm more effectively by looking back a little sooner than looking back after five years. So with that said, thank you very much for all your work. Good to see you again, Herb. I know you're going to do great work here. I know Corolla's a good company to work with, and we really have a great staff that's putting together this information. And I hope we get some really big grants from the U.S. Reclamation Department, since we have to put in two years' worth of work to get it. So with that said, this study session is adjourned, and we will reconvene at 3:00 for our voting meeting.